All right, thank you very much and welcome to our monthly meeting of the Garrett County Board of Education. I'd like to begin by reading our admission. The Garrett County Board of Education is responsible stewards of the resources entrusted to us, affirming the dignity and value of all children of our community. We'll provide all children in education which enables them to graduate college and career-ready and to become successful productive citizens in a global society. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please note that all board members are superintendent of present. If you would, join me right now, just for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. If you're standing with me, join me if you'd like to pledge your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may proceed. All right, item C on our agenda is to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. McQuarrie made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor of the agenda as adopted. All right, item number two is communications. Do we have any recognitions?
We do not have any tonight, sir.
Thank you very much. And item B, under communications, is the site-based decision-making minutes, and I hope that you all have had time as board members to look over those. And item C is audience comments. We had a person, I'm not going to call anybody's names, said, called the board office and made an appointment to be here tonight, late this afternoon. She sent a white link. Oh, was that you?
It's me.
Oh, she decided to come.
Yes.
All right, please, it's time for you.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't need to stand or cannot just sit here?
Whatever you want to do.
Well, I'm just going to sit. My name is Shawna Traver, and I'm here as a concerned parent and advocate for my son Mason Sula, as well as a niece and nephew and some cousins that all attend Garrett County High School, Garrett County School Systems. I want to begin by saying that every parent does what's best for their child and loves their child immensely. And we do the very best we can to protect them mentally, emotionally, spiritually, and physically. That includes medically as well. With that said, I'm here to claim my right, my God-given right as a parent to protect my child. I'm asserting that I don't need the government or any agency telling me what's best and how to do that. I am appearing in front of you today to ask this board to adopt the protections in House Bill One. I do know that it's held up in the courts right now, in the Supreme Courts. However, there is an attorney that is currently working with two other boards, local boards in Kentucky, and is willing to offer these services for free. These other boards are looking to hold off on doing anything with the masks until the case is clear the court system, but it would be nice to know that that decision-making process is brought back here locally in Garrett County and is not coming from the Kentucky Department of Education. This board here is elected to represent us parents, the local parents, and have our best interests and represent our will. I did see today that the mask mandate that was, I guess, handed out by our governor, that was against a Supreme Court order, and it was actually today, he was held in contempt and fined $10,000, and a temporary restraining order was issued against him for making that mandate. And that was previous, that was leading up to the Kentucky Department, or the Kentucky Department of Education issuing their mandate. If you do elect to enlist in or adopt the protections of House Bill One, what that'll do is that will give, that'll hold the Kentucky Department of Education to the same standard as the governor, according to Chris Weiss, which is the attorney that has been very active in defending the rights of the people here in Kentucky. I can give you his contact information if you're interested in talking with him and getting the paperwork started and finding out what the rights of the local board are. Now, I don't want the government directing or making medical decisions for me and my family, and I do have experience with that. Maybe not them telling me, but trusting them blindly without doing my own research. I'm an addict in recovery, and I was involved in the OxyContin stuff, where they were saying it wasn't addictive, wasn't addictive, wasn't addictive. Well, of course, I ran out and got a script of it. Well, that just precipitated my fall into the pit of hell. So, I would rather the parents maintain that choice in determining what's best for our children. Something else that I wanted to bring to your attention, nobody at my work, I work in healthcare, nobody at my work was aware of this. On January, I'm sorry, July 21st of 2021, the FDA recalled the PCR test, and again, nobody knew about it. And what was, what I cited out of there was that they're requesting that labs consider adoption of a multiplex method that can facilitate detection and differentiation of the SARS-CoV-2 and influenza virus. Because one of the things that they say at my work is, well, Shawna, masks have to work because the flu disappeared. And my thing is with that, that leads me to believe, is there a way, have they been able to differentiate between SARS-CoV and influenza from the get-go? Because this test was emergency implemented in January of 2020. So, there's just too many questions, and I can't find any peer-reviewed studies showing that masking works. And actually, the documentation that was presented to the courts that the decision was based on showed that even the masking, what it does is it protects against large droplets. However, the size of the viruses are so small that they actually go out and hang in the air for hours before they fall. The actual, in the documentation in the court system that was filed, the ruling was that it was based on the inescapable conclusion from testimony that ordering masks to stop COVID-19 is like putting up chain link fencing to keep out mosquitoes. The six-foot distancing requirements, fair, no better. That spoke volumes to me.
Shawna, I've just been told you're five minutes away.
Okay, just please consider adopting the protections of House Bill One. And then I did want to say one more thing. I want to know vaccination plans, students, where's this going? And if you do implement a mandatory vaccination plan, will mandates be required, or be accepted, or not mandates, I'm sorry, extensions be accepted?
Shawna, I apologize. I didn't recognize your name. I do know you.
You do know me.
I know you very well.
I was going to come talk to you before we were talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking to another couple, and they hadn't signed in. And so, I told them, like I told all the other board members, I've got that email this afternoon that you, that I planned on being here. So, that's, we were going to go about things a little bit here. Appreciate you coming and sharing that with us.
Absolutely.
So, at this time, is that it?
It's my fault.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming and sharing with us. All right, item D is board members, any board members have anything you'd like to share? All right, there being none. At this time, item A is superintendent, personnel changes since the July meeting, and preschool determination.
So, we've shared those personnel changes with you that have occurred since July. You know that would be a significant number, but we are fairly close to fully staffing for next week. The preschool determination, I believe it was at the last meeting where we shared the special education determination. This is the same type of feedback from Kentucky Department of Education. What I pulled up there for you to see is the most important piece. It says the status is it meets requirements. That's the highest level that you can get. So, our preschool was rated that meets requirements, and that's a great thing. So, it requires no action on your part, just information for you all to have.
All righty, item number three is reports, and item A is our treasurer's report.
Okay, so we ended the month of July with an ending balance of $6,173,015. And that is actually comparable to where we were last July, with the difference of approximately $250,000. Of course, you all know that July is our slowest month, and we don't have a whole lot of activity during that, but that will pick up soon. Just to go over a couple of the funds, our general fund ending cash balance was approximately $4.30 million, and that includes an audited beginning balance of $3,749,875. Now, that's how we ended last year in audit, so that's still subject to change, but we were looking at about 16%, 17%. And July revenues exceeded expenditures by about $500,000 in the general fund. Our special revenue fund, we've had a negative balance, of course, is about $800,000. So, we are currently waiting reimbursement back for general grants that will negate that negative balance. And we've also seen an increase in our SIR funds, which caused that to increase, and what we typically see. Our district activity, the ending cash balance was about $298,000 with very little activity. Same thing for our school activity fund, the ending balance is about $292,000. Our capital outlay, the cash balance is about $129,000, and that did include our first state allocations. Our building fund, the ending balance was approximately $932,000, and that also included our first building fund allocation. Construction fund, the ending balance was approximately $243,000 with minimal activity. Our debt service fund, of course, had zero because it's more of a holding account. We put money in and spend it out. Food service, the ending balance was about $665,000 with minimal activity. Community education, the ending cash balance is $4,825, and there's no activity in that account. And then the trust fund, the ending cash balance is $79,115, again, with minimal activity.
All right, thank you, Stacy. Appreciate it. Any board members have any questions? All right, well, thank you very much for sharing that with us. Item B is our bond potential update. Mr. Stowe?
So, each month Baird provides you all with an estimate of what your bonding capabilities are. For August, it's $28.6 million, which is down slightly from July. They'll continue to watch this with us, and you'll continue to have this on a monthly basis.
Okay, thank you very much. And bills as presented?
You'll see those on a weekly basis. So, this is just the summary of all of those.
Okay. All right, board members, item four is a consent agenda, and it's a pretty long one, and I hope you had an opportunity to look over that. And if there are no questions, I'd like to hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent.
Dr. Lamb, make a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. And all board members were in favor. Consent agenda is adopted. Item five, we come to the action agenda, and item A is to approve pay application for Garrett County Middle School Intercom Project. Mr. Stowe?
This is the final pay application for the Garrett Middle School Intercom Project. It's in the amount of $7,500. This is work that's been completed, so I would recommend the approval of the pay application for the Garrett Middle School Intercom Project.
So, you've heard superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Mr. Hurt made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McQuarrie, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor. The pay application is approved. Item B is to approve BG four for Garrett Middle School Intercom Project.
So, this is another indication that we're closing in on wrapping this up. After the BG four, you'll only have the BG five. This is a formality, so I would recommend the approval of BG four for the GMS Intercom Project.
Okay, you've heard superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Dr. Lamb made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. And all board members were in favor. Item B is approved. Item C is to approve a BG four for Kendrick Robinson Bus Canopy Project. Mr. Stowe?
Exact same thing that we had previously. There's just no pay application connected to this one, so I would recommend approval of BG four for the CDR Canopy Project.
So, you've heard superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve BG four for the CDR Bus Canopy Project.
All right, Mr. McQuarrie made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hurt, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. And all board members were in favor. Item D is, uh, C is approved. Item D is to approve memorandum of agreement with Korea College, GEAR Up.
Each year, we have a series of memorandums of agreement that we have with different organizations. One of those is with Korea College for GEAR Up. This is an annual thing that we would ask for you to approve. This past year, for two quarters, we received a reimbursement in $208,000. We're awaiting the reimbursement from April and June, and then we'll file for the fourth quarter when that's appropriate. So, my recommendation is that we approve this MOA between Korea College and Garrett County Schools.
So, you've heard superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'm moving that we approve the memorandum of agreement with Korea College for GEAR Up.
Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Dr. Lamb, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor. Item D is adopted. Item E is to approve memorandum of agreement with Kentucky Department of Education for improving student health and academic achievement.
The Kentucky Department of Education will make available $10,000 to the district to continue to support health among our students and our staff for academic achievement improvement. So, I would recommend the approval of this MOA between KDE and Garrett County Schools.
Thank you, sir. You've heard superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Mr. Hurt made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McQuarrie, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor. Item E is adopted. Item M is to approve a memorandum of agreement with Kentucky Department of Education for community education grants.
This is an offer of $20,000 to us to support the community education program. Again, an annual thing, and I would recommend the approval of this MOA with KDE for the community education grant.
All right, you've heard superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Dr. Lamb made a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Davis, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor. The agreement with KDE is approved. Item G is to approve memorandum of agreement with the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation for Community Work Transition Program. Mr. Stowe?
Again, an annual thing. Last year, because of COVID, it was down significantly. We saw about $6,000, $60,000 less, but that means an expenditure that we didn't have as well. So, I would recommend approval of this as we hope to get back to a more regular process on the community work transition program.
Okay, you've heard superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion? Mr. McQuarrie made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hurt, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor. The memorandum of agreement is approved. Item H, and we changed pace a little bit, is to approve amended classified salary schedule.
So, last month, you all approved an aid, a one-to-one aid for a student. We now need to place that salary into the classified salary schedule. As we prepared to do that, we found that there had been a typographical error in one box, and we would like to correct that at the same time. It has no influence on any individual. We caught it early enough, but we would like to get it right, so there's no miscommunication about that in any way. So, I would recommend approval of the amended classified salary schedule.
All right, once again, you've heard superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I approve of it. We accept this.
Ms. Davis made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You want to give it to Dr. Lamb?
Second. It is going to suffice as a second either way it goes.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor. The salary schedule as amended is approved. Item I is to approve meal pricing for the 2122 school year pending federal guidance.
So, we've continued to work with KDE School and Community Nutrition to make sure we're accurate on this because it's a little bit higher than what we would have anticipated. But obviously, it doesn't impact our students for their initial meal because all students receive meals for free. This is for adult pricing, and it would be for a student if they came through for a second meal. So, this is pricing that we do not set. It's based on reimbursement numbers provided to us by KDE. So, I would recommend approval of these costs for breakfast and for lunch.
Okay, you've heard superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the bill pricing.
Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McQuarrie, second. Any questions or comments on this?
I got a comment, and to the audience, it seems like we're just sprinting through all this. But these things that we've discussed in detail individually, meet with the superintendent, so it's not something we're seeing for the first time. So, I just, you know, want everybody to understand that we're just not sprinting through this.
And I would just like to say, I think $4.55 for a school lunch is too much, but we don't have any other choice. And I just want to go on the record having said that.
Yeah, that's something we have no control over.
No control over it, but I did complain about it at length to the superintendent, only to hear we have no choice.
Yeah. Yeah, and the reason why I think Mr. Hurt dropped that, we have had some folks say, oh, that school board is a river stamp. They give that superintendent anything he wants. But such is not the case. I don't know if anybody out there believes me or not, but I'm telling you, you know, we have some intense discussions sometimes, so. He is going on this year.
You have not.
All right.
He has to throw him under the bus.
Yeah, that's true. All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor. The meal pricing is approved. And item J is the opening school plan, and this is going to address, I don't know how many of you here, about the masks. Also, we have a number of folks here, I'm assuming all of you are opposed to masks. Is that right?
Yes.
Some of them's not. Okay. So, do you have that up? Uh, so, do you have that up?
Which thing? The plan itself?
The plan itself.
Yes.
As, as a board, we're bound by, and I've discussed with some of the folks before the meeting, I'm sorry I had to cut it off because it was time to start the meeting, but as a board, we're bound by law. Uh, and not just the governor's mandate, but the Kentucky Board of Education, it is, Mr. Stoll, isn't it a KAR?
It is. It was an emergency regulation that was passed last week. It's going through the processes normally we go through. It was real deficient this week, but that doesn't stop, stop the process. When, when something moves like that, it continues through. We're, it, it has the full effect of law at this point until it's taken down. Because it's an emergency, the maximum length that it can last is 270 days. When KDE put it in place, one of the things that they indicated was that as soon as they had clearance from CDC, that they would take that down. And they, I think they placed actually in their motion that they had to have a meeting, if possible, within 24 hours of the time that that goes, that occurs. So one of the recommendations that, actually, what we put up on the website about three weeks ago was a recommendation to open the year with masks being optional. And that's where we were until the legislation went into effect. One of the things that I would encourage the board to consider doing tonight is to adhere to that regulation and open with the requirement for the masks, but also put in this opening that the minute that these go away, we don't have to reconvene, that at that point, it immediately goes to an optional choice for parents in the community to make that decision. The only thing that that does is it speeds up that process a little bit, so that when the executive order or the emergency regulation goes away, you don't have to have a meeting to say, let's go back to an optional component for our community. We will continue to do all the other mitigation strategies that we have in place. We're actually looking into some additional things along the way to make sure that we're doing everything we can to keep our students healthy. I think everybody here wants that. So even the comments about not wearing masks were about the, the safety of students, and we understand that. But I feel like from the board's perspective, you probably don't have an option today relative to the conversation about an attorney who would be willing to represent. I'll certainly be glad to take the information and then contact him on behalf of the board.
Yeah, and we quickly, of course, I didn't get the email, Sean, to let this afternoon, some of the other boards just got here and they hadn't seen it either. So we, we looked up House Bill 1, and of course, we're not lawyers, but we understood it had to do with three opening schools for in-person learning. And we've been, I, I didn't see anything in there about masks.
So I believe, I believe, and, and again, thank you for saying we're not attorneys, so.
I'm not here, I'm just getting information from an attorney.
What everybody understands, what I'm about to say wouldn't hold up anywhere, except right here. When I've read through it, it seems to imply that what we are supposed to do is to make sure that we understand we have the right to go to school. And we plan to. We don't have an expectation next week of not going to school. We will have students in the transition piece on Tuesday, and then we will have all of our students on Wednesday. My hope and prayer is that we don't run into any of the issues that have hit some of the other communities already, where they've had large numbers of people who've had to go into quarantine. So you can't control that, I can't control that, and the board can't control that. That's what we'll pray for as we go through this process. My recommendation to the board is that we adopt this opening plan that's really no different than what we posted other than that we have currently taken away this as being an optional piece on the masks. But include also that as soon as we can, that we provide that option back to our community and to our families. If we do that, I believe that covers as best you can where you are. And I, I would dare say that I'm not trying to speak for the board, but had the, the mandate not occurred, I believe the board would have made a decision to allow this to be optional for parents. I think you just had your hands tied by an action that was taken by a group you couldn't control, so.
Yeah, I, yes, sir.
What are the consequences for ignoring the KDE?
For who?
For the school board?
For the school board.
For the district?
So for the school board, they could potentially be removed from their positions. We would lose any immunity that we had to prosecution should something occur to a student because we weren't following that, say, student got sick at school because of that. So there are a number of pieces along that line. We probably would lose support of our insurance, and they would not back us. We had actually checked with our insurance carriers prior to the mandate, and they had assured us that we could make the choice to be optional. The only thing that has changed is that it's no longer at the board's discretion really to make that decision.
And I'd like to say something, but to do, not only to those of you that have, and I appreciate you all coming and being with us tonight, but all those that might be watching either on YouTube or Facebook Live on the Garrett County School page, that not a, I don't think a member of the board, we don't like wearing masks, I hate. And if this board had been given us a choice, if we had a choice, I believe tonight, we would have adopted a individual choice, you know, for a person. If a person wanted to wear a mask, they could, they could have. But again, I, I, I hope people understand this. This is out of our hands. That we really don't have any control over. Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to ask if you all think studying the harms that it causes for kids.
Well, we've got this, a couple of years, they just gave me a whole stack of stuff. Sean sent a real long email. Did you type on that?
Yeah. I typed it on computer, though.
You typed it on computer, and, and it's basically a lot of stuff that, I'm sorry, I forgot your all names. A lot of the stuff that you all got in here that we talked about just before the meeting is in the big email that Sean was sending. And so, yeah, yeah, we know it. We understand that, but, but it's out of our hands.
Where would you draw the line? I mean, if they, if the KDE said that they had to have vaccines for the kids, would you draw a line there?
Well, I don't know. I don't, personally, I don't think that's going to happen. It may. I know a lot of companies are going that route, a lot, and hospitals.
A lot of schools, too.
Huh?
There's a lot of schools.
A lot of schools are doing it, too.
It's coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a bill has been filed by the legislature that schools cannot, are able to vaccinate.
So I, the way I would address that is to simply say there are a series of vaccinations that we do require. You, you're all aware of that, that they've been around for a significant period of time. We've had a chance to take a look at those. Our suggestion is that we've never suggested that. We've not required that of our staff. We don't plan to require that of our staff. You know, we feel like that that's a significantly different piece than the mask. And while the mask could, could show evidences from some reports that would say certain things, the one thing that I can't control and show you anything of is what happens when you place something into your body. And so we've never suggested that was a direction that we would go. To your question, in a hypothetical situation like that, it's hard to answer what that would be for this board. So I would never try to speak for the board, but know that we have been, I think, fairly consistent since the reopening that occurred for our schools back in the spring, that we have tried to be as open to options as we possibly could. That was even what we hoped for last year when we were doing hybrids and things of that nature, was to provide as much choice for families as we could. Sometimes there was really no good choice, but we tried to provide this we knew to. Whether that happens or not remains to be seen. We, Mr. Cretchen has pointed out, we don't have the authority to do that right now. We have no intention of doing that. That will not be a recommendation from me. That if, if the board had the choice, I would not look at them and say, I think that that's a wise thing for us to do.
I feel fairly certain that I can say with 100% confidence that I would draw the line at that. I would not support that. I just wouldn't. You, as a parent, should have a choice as to what vaccines you give your children. And you certainly should have a choice as to whether or not you enrolled in an experimental medical study. So I, I can confidently say that I would not support mandating that vaccine for our kids. I would possibly lobby pretty heavily against it.
And Sean.
It goes to shame for me. I have absolutely no way, but I vote for mandating that.
And Sean, you mentioned about the religious piece of this. I'm a Christian. I've been a pastor for 50 years. I've had bull shots, and as soon as I can get the booster, I'm taking the booster. That's my choice.
Right. It's your choice, right.
It's my choice, that's right.
We all, we're tied into that choice.
That's the way all, we just want that choice.
But we've got no topic, and we haven't gotten the cart to pull the horse.
Easy to do.
But it is easy to do, but I think this is something that has the interest of a lot of folks. And I will say this, of all the texts and emails that I've received, I don't even know the number, but only one out of, I'm throwing the number out here, 1521, it does, begged us to mandate what it makes, only one out of, out of the whole. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do you want to hear it again, or is everybody's turn? I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve the school plan as written.
Thank you. Dr. Lamb, make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. McQuarrie seconded. We've had plenty of discussion. All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. And all board members were in favor. The opening school plan is adopted. All right, A is to approve preschool virtual option, Mr. Stoll.
So KDE has not provided us an opportunity to do a virtual option for our students in a regular setting. But since preschool is an optional piece, we've been requested to make that available to our, our parents. That allows them to continue to receive services for their students who should receive services without us infringing in any way on the mandates that we have to only have a limited number of NTI days. So my recommendation to you is that we approve this virtual option for preschool for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Tell me.
Mr. Hurt made a motion. Ms. Davis seconded. Do you have any questions or comments? I've been asked just in the last few days why we're not offering a virtual for everybody else.
Last year, KDE offered us unlimited NTI days. Unlimited NTI days gave you the ability then to count students present if they were not at school because they were involved in learning at a distance. This past spring and summer, KDE took us back to the place where we only had 10 NTI days. So that means the most that you could be out and have students learning from home. Currently, it's 10 days. In the past, those NTI days were used in the winter for snow days to try to continue the educational process during that timeframe. Without those days, we don't have a mechanism that allows us to do virtual like we did last year. We have no ability for Mr. Boland's office as DPP to count students present in that fashion. So you would, in effect, have a pretty negative attendance number because we have no mechanisms in place. Last year, all of those mechanisms were in place. This year, none of them are. Is it possible that they would bring that back? It's always possible, just like you all were talking about earlier. We hypothetically, it could occur. And if that happened, then we would have to make a decision whether we were going to offer that or not. I've not received any information from any of my meetings that suggest it's in the near future.
Okay, any, any other questions? You've heard superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion?
You do.
All right. And second, all in favor, let me know by lifting hand. Thank you all. We're in favor. When you get old, like me, you tend to forget. You decide for yourself. Thank you very much. All right, item L is to approve emergency certification for out of field.
So a little different than approving emergency certification of an individual who doesn't have teaching certification. We have three individuals this year who are certified as teachers that we're asking to teach outside of their field. In order to do that, we still have to request EPSB's permission. In order to do that, we have to have your approval to do that. I've posted here for you to know that two of them are outside of their content. One is just a grade band change. Grade band change simply means it's there, still in their content, but it was an area that they weren't prior, prior to this having certification to do that. My recommendation to you, I think I put two, should be three, recommend approval of three emergency certifications to teach out of field this year.
I think you've heard superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Tell me.
Mr. McQuarrie made the motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Davis seconded. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. And all board members were in favor. The certifications are adopted. All right. Item M is update from Sherman Carter Barnmark. Now, for those of you that have come, you're more than welcome to stay. If you'd like to hear the architect's presentation about our, some ideas they've got for our facilities plan, you're more than welcome to. But if you'd like to leave, please feel free to do that. Would you all like to stay, or you? You're going to go?
I'm going to bring you this number up, this contact information.
Okay.
Or you'll need to leave it back here?
No, that's fine. Just take a real quick break.
Can I ask a general question?
Go ahead.
Are we allowed to have students exempted if we turn in exemptions of any kind and they can come to school without a mask? Are you all, what's your, going to be your policy that way?
So you would have to have an exemption that could be approved. So if you want to speak with me, I'll be happy to talk to you about that. Honestly, at this point, just to be candid with you, I'm not sure what that would be, but I don't know what you're going to propose, so, okay.
Well, there's just some general exemption forms that you can get for different reasons.
So we can, I'm happy to speak to you about it.
Thank you all so much.
Oh, thank you all for coming. We appreciate it.
I'm Stacy.
Okay, gentlemen, I turn it over to Sherman Carter Barnmark.
Thank you all very much. We just really appreciate the opportunity to come back and talk to you for just a few minutes. I do want to introduce the gentlemen that are with me, sitting down and standing by the bounds, Andrew Owens. Andrew is one of our associate principals and also a registered architect in our education studio. He works with me on a lot of projects. And you all might recognize Jordan there, Jordan. If you remember when we. When we came and interviewed, we had a picture of Jordan, but he was distracted with something had to do with a wedding and a honeymoon. So we overlooked that, though, so we wanted to have you here tonight. Jordan's been working on this, too. And so I do have some updates for you as far as the cost, but I wanted to show you what we've been working on because in order to give you more detailed cost information, we have to base that on something. Otherwise, we just go by the district facility plan and call that good. So we definitely wanted to go ahead and, and look at some options. And so if we could, we'll look at. I don't have a clue, so. Okay, so, so we looked at what we would call a master plan for the high school campus because there's a lot of moving parts, as you know, the district facility plan. So what we wanted to do is just take a look at what that would mean for utilizing the whole site. And, and one of the biggest components is the gymnasium and where that might go. Then following that is the football stadium. You know, that's another large component. And then the other fields and things that go along with that. So in, in this first vision, the gymnasium would go here, much as it was in the original concept for the high school where the ground is flat and then, you know, there's a nice yard out there to put the gymnasium. We also considered where the location for an auditorium might be, simply because that's also on your district facility plan. May or might not, may or may not be part of this project, but we'd be remiss if we didn't think about it simply because you don't want to build something and then have to tear something down. and then have to tear something down later because we didn't really think about where the auditorium might go. So at any rate, the gymnasium is here. The baseball softball complex is right back here, right past your parking lot. And then in this scheme, the practice, the bowl, I'll call it, you know, that stays like it is. The athletic building stays. And then the football stadium would need to go over here. So that's pretty much the layout for that master plan. But we had some discussion in our own office with our teams and we thought, well, what would it look like if the gym was a standalone piece? What if it wasn't attached to the high school? And if you all have any questions as we go, please ask.
Where were you thinking the auditorium might? To the left of the gym, the coach gym.
I'm going to show you in a more detailed plan how that would work. Could I have the next slide, please? Ah, and this is exactly it. This is the end of your high school here. It's the end of your high school right here. The band room is right here. And so the new gym, we would position right like this. But because all of your parking is back here, this is where we located the main entrance. And then the auditorium would be right here. And they would actually share, in this case, a common area for lobby, for restrooms and that sort of thing. So you wouldn't have to double up and build that twice. Now, this is on a flat piece of ground there. So you would come in on the playing floor and then, of course, go up into the bleachers and then the mezzanine level up here with a walking track around the whole thing. And so that's sort of how we would see that one. And again, this is just conceptual, understand?
They want to see the capacity of this.
We, on both of these, three thousand.
Good.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure that they're equal in ways so the capacities would be the same. Next slide, please. And so this was just an image of, in 3D, just a mock-up of what that could potentially look like from the parking lot that you can see there. And then the next one, please. And just a little bit closer up, that would be the main entrance there. Auditorium directly to your left and then the gymnasium beyond, which is the big box. Okay, next one, please. And then just the final version so you can get an idea of the size of that facility there. And please don't worry at this point about the color of the brick. This is just part of the program that we use. We do not intend to suggest anything color-wise at this point. But it's just to give you an idea of what it could look like. Okay, next slide, please. And then in the second master plan, this is the one, now we left the auditorium here, attached right next to the band room because that makes a lot of sense in terms of backstage and that sort of thing. But we said, what if the gymnasium was at the edge of the parking lot and actually bridged the difference between the elevation here and down in the bowl? In other words, in this one, you come into the gym on the mezzanine level and you go down to the playing floor or up to the mezzanine. So you come in at the middle. And so this was, works into that hillside. Now, the issue on this one is there is a sinkhole here from the site plans that we had. Actually, there's four, but this one here and this one here and this one here are an overbuilding. So they're not, they're not an issue. We've already built on those. We think by holding the gymnasium back here, we're building into the berm on the hillside rather than over the sinkhole. But obviously, with this scheme, we want more detailed information about the geotech. When we're in car stepography down in the Mammoth Cave region, we actually use something that is like an X-ray for underground. And they can find caverns and voids. And so we'd certainly recommend that here just to be sure if this was something that you desired as an option. But in this one, the football stadium now, as you know, there's a, the bowl has a field here and then a practice field here. And we would turn the orientation to be the best orientation for a football stadium. And actually, it would attach, the bleachers would attach to the back of the gym. So if you can imagine, from the lower level of the gym, we would have locker rooms and that sort of thing. And the players would just run out through the bleachers right onto the field. So it would really be a comprehensive way of tying the gymnasium to the stadium itself. And then the practice fields would be over here. Didn't mess with, we like this orientation for the baseball softball, so it's identical to the other scheme. Okay, next slide, please. So in floor plan, the gym is very similar, except here is your entry level. So you come in here and you're on the mezzanine. And there's the walking track and the bleachers, the mezzanine bleachers. And you would go down the stairs onto the playing floor. Now, you can see the blue here. We had talked early on, I just want to mention this, about having some flex spaces that might serve some double duty because there's another part on the DFP that calls for some additional classrooms. Now, you may not need them right now, but thinking about them and maybe incorporating them here might allow us to get some leverage with the square footage requirements that we know we're going to have. Because these two gymnasiums are right at forty thousand square feet, quite a bit larger. On your DFP, the original gym is sixteen thousand square feet. Now, that's net. So if you gross it up, it's about twenty-three thousand. So the difference is twenty-three to forty. So it's significantly larger. And obviously, it's going to cost more. I'll show you that in a minute. But this is the layout for this one. Again, it's, the two are very similar. This one is a little bit more compact because I'm not sharing lobbies with the auditorium. So there is some savings there, even though there's some more cost in the site development on the hillside. Okay, next slide, please. And just an idea of what that potentially could look like with the main, here's your parking area again. Main entrance being here. And this is that curved lobby piece here with the gymnasium behind. Now, it's not as tall of a volume now because remember, part of it's buried into the hillside. So it's not near as that huge volume that you would see on the previous one. Okay, next slide, please. And then on the other side, this is what we were talking about where the lower level of the gym is actually buried into the hillside. This would be the football stadium. And from locker rooms down below, the players could come right out onto the, onto the field. So we would work that hillside that way. Okay, next slide, please. And with a different program, and Jordan helped with this one. This is just a vision of what that interior lobby entrance to the gym could look like. If you could see that close, I guarantee you there's a picture of Jordan in there somewhere. But a lot of times, it's graphics like that, big, large graphics. It's like vinyl wallpaper and it's one of the most cost-effective things you can do. And it really has a great deal of impact, especially in a community where the heritage of the school system is so important. Like you're all, it's just a nice way of recognizing that. Okay, next slide, please. And this is just a little bit closer view of that. And this is just, the floor shiny is terrazzo, but again, it's just a finish we selected just to show possibilities. And the next slide, please. And then from up top, what the potential could look like with the bleacher arrangement that we showed with the, on each side and then the mezzanine and then the end as well. So that's just an idea of how that could, could work. Okay, next slide. Okay, so now I'm through with the fun images. So let me go to the, to the dollars. So what we did is we took the district facility plan numbers and KDE has recently updated their math. In other words, because of inflation, because of rising costs, they've updated their facility numbers. And it equated to about an eleven, ten to eleven percent increase. And so we looked at the DFP and we updated all those numbers for your potential projects. Now, in addition to that, we had to take our gymnasium. We had to make it larger. So there you see the three thousand seat gymnasium. And then also the auditorium. Typically, the auditoriums for a school year size, you'd want to seat half the student population. We've done some larger, but KDE only identifies an auditorium that would seat a third of the population. That's not a very big auditorium. In fact, I don't know any district where we've done that minimum size. So I did upgrade the size of the auditorium to be about four hundred and fifty seats. And again, that was just something on my part based on our experience in a number of districts doing this. And then what I did is updated the rest of your project potentials just based on the new numbers. And so I come down here with a total of potential projects. Now, this is, you know, your unmet need. This isn't something that you would expect to do in a four-year district facility plan. This is just a snapshot of all the unmet need. Selecting the, you know, a twenty million dollar project is, is obviously, you have to select some and, you know, put off others. But at any rate, this is the total picture here. Now, I do want to clarify, these are construction dollars. The only time that KDE recognizes total construction cost is when you're filling out the financial side of the BG one. That's the only time. Otherwise, everything that we do with KDE, even the DFP numbers, they're based on construction cost. Okay? So that's what this represents here. So let me go to the next slide and I'm going to show you just three scenarios. And there could be many, many more, but I want to show you three. The way that we've done that, you see this big slice of the twenty million dollar pie there? That would be the spectator gymnasium. You can see that at nine million eight hundred thousand dollars. And so we just identified the other things at the high school just to show you that, what this pie would be. And so there's, there's the auditorium, the baseball softball, the football stadium. And then what, what we've done is this circle around it, that is your soft cost. So for instance, if you wanted to do these projects that are selected right here, construction cost would be a little over twenty million dollars, but you'd have to add the soft cost to it to be, you know, twenty-three or right at twenty-four for this combination. So let me go to the next slide and I'll show you a little bit different version.
You don't have hard copies of this that you can give, Spidey?
I don't have hard copies, but I'll give it to Mr. Stoll so that he can share it with you all. Absolutely. So this one said a little bit differently. Let's do, start looking at some elementary projects that we can put in. And we'll still do the football stadium, we'll still do baseball softball, the auditorium and gym. But now we won't do miscellaneous classrooms. We'll start looking at some of the renovation projects at the elementary. And when I do that, and again, I'm trying combinations that get you close to twenty million. Now, you may say after this exercise that, wait a minute, we don't want to spend any more than twenty total project cost. So we'd have to back that up to about seventeen million, seventeen-five, somewhere right around there.
Soft costs would be on top of that.
Be on top of that. I actually looked at a couple other BG ones that we had done recently. And I had a project that we just opened. It was an elementary school and it was a little over seventeen million dollars construction cost. And the soft costs were only sixteen percent on that one. They didn't have to buy land. It did have a construction manager. So it can vary some. But we don't have a lot of control over that. Now, I still think with your projects, if it's like the gymnasium and the baseball, you know, like the football stadium and athletics, that doesn't require a lot of technology, a lot of furnishings and that sort of thing. So I really believe that we could even be less than the eighteen percent. But I don't know that for certain until we would get further into it and we really look once some other decisions were made.
Would you explain to the folks watching this, board member, what soft costs are?
Okay, soft costs are everything associated with the project beyond the construction bids. In other words, the architect's fees, the building has to, the building plans have to be submitted to housing building and construction. There's fees involved in submitting that. A construction manager's fee, the fiscal agent that prepares the bond sale. You know, that's a significant cost for a project this size. So all of those are considered soft costs, even the printing for the document when contractors want to submit bids, even that, all that, the geotechnical information that I mentioned before, that's rolled in there as well as surveys. So it's all the incidental costs beyond the construction bids, if that makes sense.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Sure. And so here you just see another version of a combination of projects. And it really just, that's, I can give you good information with which to make a decision, but ultimately, it will be you all on which projects you do. Because one of the good things is you all recognized you had a lot of need and you wanted the flexibility to select projects. I can't tell you how difficult it is if you, if you don't have it listed and you want to change that DFP, it just delays the projects further. And that process goes on and on. You all are in good shape because you've listed everything as a priority that you need. And so now it really is just determining which of those projects are going to go forward first. And then the very last one, slide, please. Next one. Couple more. And so here again, just a little bit different version. And again, I'm still keeping, I'm still keeping the gymnasium in there. But I said, well, maybe we don't do the auditorium at this point. And we start looking at some other projects that we can put in, recognizing the auditorium to be sometime down the road. So again, these three scenarios are just our idea of putting some projects together so that you'd have an idea of how we were looking at it. And with that, I'll turn it over to questions. We do have a 3D model that we can spin around and show you if you wanted to see any more detail about the buildings. But again, that's totally up to you all at this point. Yes, ma'am?
The football stadium with the track around it, is it going to meet the requirements of hosting bands?
I would certainly, yes. In other words, the, this is the, it will host everything. It's also a combination soccer field. The track is the larger track. So band competition should not be an issue either.
What we're showing right now actually has a press box that has an observation loft. And for high days and marching band, that's the director's favorite thing, to be able to get up high. Even on that second scheme where we have kind of a little bit of visibility from the second story of that gymnasium, again, the opportunity to get up there, get up high and see drill would be awesome from a marching band.
What kind of surface are we talking about on this field?
Turf. Yes, sir. We, we looked at, just again, once we had the basis of the design, I looked at some previous projects where we had just done turf. They were coming in really pretty good. They started a couple of years ago and they were over a million dollars. And now the last one was like seven twenty. So it's still expensive, don't get me wrong, but it's come down quite a bit in price. So it's not as expensive as it was. So yes, turf, everything else, I mean, lighting for the fields, we've included all of that in as well. Didn't leave anything out.
Let me ask you this question. You're talking about the locker rooms under the stadium. Is this also considered like for a field house, weight room, stuff like that, or is that just for the dress?
I think for the weight training too. We did this at my hometown in Mead County and under the basketball gym, we had the locker rooms on one side and then the weight training on the other. And everybody came out and down then onto the playing field. So what the, there's more site work for that option rather than on the flat side. But when you're building into the hillside like that, that's more cost-effective. So you save some money doing that. So you're really trading the additional fill for a less cost per square foot for that lower level.
So if that's being used against field house, then the existing field house, are you, what's your plan there?
Well, I think, you know, there's a lot of sports around that whole master plan. And I think that could be used for multiple sports venues for, you know, whether it's girls soccer or, you know, there's a lot of things that we can adapt to that. I didn't want to tear that down. I thought that was sacred ground, so I wanted to make sure we didn't, we didn't do anything to that.
It probably is sacred.
So and again, this is just a snapshot of vision to give us an idea so that we could provide you some better numbers that we feel more comfortable with than just what was on the DFP.
Anybody else? Thank you all. Appreciate it so much.
Thank you very much. And I will have Andrew send the, everything that we showed you. you down to Mr. Stahl, and he can distribute that too.
I appreciate it.
I'm getting tongue tied in my mouth. So thank you all again.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate you. All right. Item in is executive session, and at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to leave our public meeting and go into executive session to discuss our possible land acquisition and some possible litigation.
My pleasure. Go into executive session.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Perry made the most, do I have a second?
Second.
First segment, all members in favor, let me know when they can. The all board members were in favor. This closes out our public meeting, and now we go into executive session.
Just maybe we can tell the folks there that we will come back, and if there's an action that has to be taken based on this, that that will occur in an open session.
Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Those of you that are watching virtually, I don't know how long our executive session's going to be, but we will come back, and whatever decision we make will be made in a, in the public portion of the meeting when we come out of executive session. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stahl, would you like to leave the board's lap?
Thank you very much, and those of you that may still be with us, we appreciate your patience. And we're at this time ready to come out of executive session and share with you the results of our conversation. So I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
I accept the motion.
Mr. Perry made the motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Ms. Davis, second, all in favor, let me know on the left-hand hand. Thank you very much, we are back in our public meeting. So, at this time, the land acquisition, Mr. Stoll, would you speak to that, please?
Sure, the board has been looking into the possibility of making a purchase of property. And my recommendation to you is that you pursue entering an option to purchase the property at the corner of Maple Avenue and Alden Street in Lancaster, Kentucky.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know on the left-hand hand. All board members were in favor, the motion carries. The next has to do with litigation, Mr. Stoll, would you speak to that, please?
House Bill 563 that passed in this last legislative session had two components to it. One component is the allowing for students to move across district lines in a much freer capacity than they've ever been allowed to do before. And the second component was funding through tax credits of private education with public funds. A group known as the Council for Better Education, which was part of the original CARA lawsuit, has remained in effect. And they have filed a lawsuit challenging the constitutionality of those tax credits. And so, in the session that you all were in, you crafted a motion, and then Mr. Hert has that, so I would recommend that you allow him to read that motion, and I would support that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we join the Council for Better Education Incorporated to challenge the constitutionality of House Bill 563, a school voucher program that if it goes into effect as scheduled on June 28th, will funnel $125 million in state revenue to private schools.
Thank you, sir, you've heard the motion, do I have a second? Ms. Davis, second, do we have any other discussion or comments? All in favor, please let me know on the left-hand hand. Thank you very much, all board members were in favor, the motion carries. And as the motion is carried, I'd like to read, if I may, the following. It is hereby resolved that the Garrett County Board of Education authorize this Superintendent Kevin Stoll to take all necessary steps to support the Council for Better Education.
And we're at this time ready to come out of executive session and share with you the results of our conversation. So I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
I like the motion.
Mr. Perry made the motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Davis seconded. All in favor, let me know on my left hand. Thank you very much. We are back in our public meeting. So, at this time, the land acquisition, Mr. Stoll, would you speak to that, please?
Sure. The board has been looking into the possibility of making a purchase of property. And my recommendation to you is that you pursue entering an option to purchase the property at the corner of Maple Avenue, Pauline Street, in Lancaster, Kentucky.
Okay. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know on my left hand. All board members were in favor. The motion carries. The next has to do with litigation. Mr. Stoll, would you speak to that, please?
House Bill 563 that passed in this last legislative session had two components to it. One component is the allowing for students to move across district lines in a much freer capacity than they've ever been allowed to do before. And the second component was funding through tax credits of private education with public funds. A group known as the, I'll split it up a little way, the Council for Better Education, which was part of the original CARA lawsuit, has remained in effect, and they have filed a lawsuit challenging the constitutionality of those tax credits. And so, in the session that you all were in, you crafted a motion, and then Mr. Hertz has that, so I would recommend that you allow him to read that motion.
Thanks, sir.
I would support that.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Perry?
I'd like to make a motion that we join the Council for Better Education Incorporated to challenge the constitutionality of House Bill 563, a school voucher program that if it goes into effect as scheduled on June 28th, will funnel $125 million in state revenue to private schools.
Thanks, sir. You've heard the most. Do I have a second? Mr. Perry seconded. Do we have any other discussion or comments? All in favor, please let me know on my left hand. Thank you very much. All board members were in favor. The motion carries. And as the motion is carried, I'd like to read, if I may, the following. It is hereby resolved that the Garrett County Board of Education authorize this Superintendent Kevin Stoll to take all necessary steps to support the Council for Better Education Incorporated, CBE, in its legal challenge to the unconstitutionality of tax credits in House Bill 563, including the payment of any appropriate dues or assessments related to this school district's membership in KBE or its support of the reference legal challenge. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. It's been a long night. I'll entertain another motion.
I'd like a motion. We adjourn.
Mr. Perry made a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hertz seconded. All in favor, say left hand. Yes. We adjourn. Thank you all so much. Thank you that you stayed with us. We appreciate it. Hope everyone has a good evening.